Good evening. This is the Committee of the Whole, Monday, November 13, 2017. I'm Tara Burkhard. I represent the first ward with the wonderful Mike Bruno. Let's note for the record, everyone is here for tonight. And I think we'll get started. Second thing, number two, approved Committee of the Whole minutes from October 23, 2017. Do I have a motion? Alderman Bruno with a motion. Second, with Alderman Swanson. Do we need to do a roll call? No. A voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on. Three A, recommend acceptance of the organizational assessment of administrative functions report. Do I have a motion? Alderman McGowan, a second. Alderman Bruno. Do we have discussion from the dais? I'm told our consultant, Joellen Earl, is here tonight if we have questions. Any questions? Any comments from the dais? Alderman Cummings?
This would be directed to Joellen. A few years ago, we had discussed...
Is your microphone on?
Reapportioning. Microphone is on. Okay. Reapportioning some of the job duties. I see some of that discussed in the report. I'm wondering how deeply you dived into that. There were department heads that said, yes, I would take added responsibility for added pay. And I'm just wondering if that was revisited this time and what your thoughts were and how you came to the conclusions that you did.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. My name is Joellen Earl from Gov HR. And to answer your question, we had a limited scope of what we were looking at relative to the administrative function. And we looked at some functions in the city administrator's office. And the only operational department that we spoke with was Public Works, just because of the impact that the administrative function has on that department. So we didn't look further into the city, into other departments, about whether or not people would be willing to take on more responsibilities.
That's...
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Maladra?
Could I ask you to just give a sort of a summary of your assessment from your perspective? I mean, I know what I read. I read that you talked to people and you got feedback and things like that. What I don't think you did touch on is, in your experience, given, you know, the realm and scope of what you do, how our needs or how our situation sits comparable to other communities in your experience and things of that nature.
Well, the recommendation is to look at reinstituting a position that would help with the administrative function under the city administrator. There were a variety of people that I spoke with, a lot of findings that seemed to lend itself to the fact that the city administrator is still immersed in a lot of the day-to-day task-oriented functions. And in order to elevate the position to actually be an administrator more so than doing some of the hands-on work, it would be really helpful to have this person. And I made some recommendations as to some of the tasks that the person could take on as well. If you look structurally with other organizations in Illinois, there's many that have this setup in populations that are similar to the size of Geneva, higher and lower. So it's not unusual to have an assistant or administrative services person that is helping the administrator in cities and villages in Illinois.
So would it be sort of a fair assessment to say that this person can operate in the weeds, allowing the city administrator to step up and focus more on strategic goals and objectives? Is that why these communities do that split or have that position?
I don't know exactly how every position is structured, so I wouldn't want to say wholesale that's the case. But it tends to, people that are in that second role or in a role that's kind of coordinating some of the functions on behalf of the administrator, do get into some of the nitty-gritty and some of the detail work. And it allows the administrator to focus on strategic issues, as you indicated.
So as we look at our situation, is it those strategic functions that either are or will be getting short shrift if we don't make a change?
Based on my conversations, it seems that local government in and of itself is complex. It's getting more complex. And if you're thinking about some of your long-term issues, it would be a good thing to have your administrator be able to focus on that on your behalf, more so than she is today. It's not that she's not doing it at all, but there are a lot of complicated issues that are facing local governments. You might have to be working with your neighbors on agreements. I don't know what the future will bring. But because she's still focused on a lot of the day-to-day functions, she's not as easily able to switch into that role with necessary.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. I guess I just have a couple of brief comments, and I don't know that it has so much to do with your report, but with the scope of the report that we have. I think you said it best when you said this is a very limited look that you took at it. It looked like you just basically interviewed many of the direct reports or a handful of direct reports with Stephanie and a couple others. My recollection from our meeting, when we decided to investigate whether or not we were going to add another position, was that we were going to involve Alderman in the process. The discussion was to have two or three involved. We said that we were going to specifically look for somebody to not just parenthetically talk about other communities, but to specifically cite other non-home rule communities our size and what their structures were, those that had them, those that did not. I thought the scope was going to be, the job was going to be benchmarked against other administrators in other communities. It was going to be benchmarked against the public sector. You know, I guess that's my recollection. We all listened to the tape to see if that was, you know, what the discussion was. So, you know, I think that, you know, I am going to vote to not accept this report because even the discussion now that you're, the questions that Alderman Maladra has posed to you, I think they're very, while I'm not disputing your answers, they're very general in nature. And I don't think that's what we were looking for when we were going to consider whether or not we were going to make a significant change with our budget and end this position. So for those reasons, I'm not going to vote to accept this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rodecky. Anyone else from the dais right now? Alderman Swanson?
Clarification for me. If we accept this report, we're saying we want to reinstate the position immediately? Or just in the future?
No. Accepting the report is just accepting the report. The next item on the agenda is to determine whether or not you want to fill a position.
Okay. Okay. Because in my opinion, we should evaluate this position in the context of the entire budget and entire staffing levels. And I think the time to do that is starting in January and finalizing it with our annual budget. So I would accept this report. However, I would not accept staffing this position immediately. I think we should consider it in the next fiscal year budget. Thank you.
Anyone else from up here right now?
Just for clarification, I was interviewed in this process, so I did spend some time with Joellen and shared some thoughts as it relates to the position and the process. So just so you're aware.
Thank you, Alderman Kilburg. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Leading up to this, I think I sat down with all of the, most all the directors, a lot of the people that you talked to here. I didn't find anyone that was willing to take on more for more money. What the structure with Assistant City Administrator seems to offer is we, with that position, we seem to have less director-level positions. I'm not sure if that's, if you can affirm that or if that's standard, but it seems like this is a more efficient way to oversee our city staff more efficiently. Thank you.
I'll respond to that just briefly. Yes, the structure here is that it's overseeing administrative services. Other communities have separate department heads for some of those roles. They might have a separate finance director, IT, HR director. And in this case, the recommendation is to have that person or individual that would assume that role, take on one of those functional areas as an area of expertise, and then also coordinate the work of not only HR finance and IT, but also communications as well. So it does create a situation where there is some departments working together with items that are very similar. It will enhance communication, and it will also then allow the city administrator not to have to deal directly with all of those individuals. She would rather be able to deal with some of the operational department heads more readily because of this person would be able to deal with the day-to-day administrative functions.
Thank you.
Anyone who hasn't spoken before, I represent, or recognized, Alderman Cummings? All right, Alderman Cummings?
I'm always intrigued with how questions are asked because I think the way a question is asked can put some walls around how the question is answered. And if the question were either posed or interpreted as, is the current position overloaded with work and would an assistant help? I think the answer becomes yes. If the question is, is the current position overloaded and what alternatives do we have? Then I think we get back to the potential for offloading areas of expertise to the department heads that did verbally tell me that they would accept more work for more In other words, we sort of, we lessen the load in one area. The work remains within the area of expertise of people on staff. And we save hiring somebody. My worry is that perhaps the question wasn't posed that way, and so the answer was never going to come to life, that answer.
Well, the scope of the work was limited to the people who work with the city administrator and the Director of Public Works. So I didn't speak with any of the other operational department heads, so I didn't ask that question of other people. I did ask that question of the people with whom I met. And the answer was that they're not, they don't have the capacity. In the report, I talk about if there are some other changes made, there will be capacity in the future. And there is the opportunity for people to maybe move up at some point. But as the things are structured now, it's not, it's not my recommendation. I think if you get further down the road with some technological enhancements and some other things, that could happen. It could free up that capacity. But I never asked the question about, or I didn't think it was in my scope to ask the question, if you were offered more money, would you do more work? I would not have asked that question. But it was more, you know, is there anything that's duplicative? Are you able to take on more responsibility? Are there things that you could give to someone else? Those types, we did discuss those things, but again, it was, the scope was small. So I think, and I did say in here, I think in the future, some of that could happen, but other steps need to be taken first in order for that to occur.
Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
So just for clarification, the department heads that report to the city administrator all were asked if they could take on more, and everyone said that they were at capacity? Is that correct?
I spoke with the division managers. The only person, only department head, if I have this correctly organizationally, was the Director of Public Works.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Rodecky?
Thank you. In your recommendation, you say the elimination of the position of Assistant City Administrator/Director of Administrative Services has had a notable impact in Geneva. What have our constituents seen as that impact? What have the people in Geneva felt as a result of this?
So again, I was looking internal to the organization. I did not speak with any residents of the city. My reason for stating, making that statement is that some of the responsibility that has been retained by your city administrator relates to the oversight of the human resources function. And because of that, it is taking her time away from the operational departments because she is having to spend time in that particular area. So because she doesn't have the opportunity to work more with the operational departments, possibly look at more strategic issues for the city, I can't say what they could be in the future. We don't know what's going to happen with intergovernmental agreements, if there's some other state statute, the budget, the state of Illinois. If anything like that happens and she has to get together with her department heads, she still has a lot on her plate that's prohibiting her from doing that. And my understanding is that because she's working with a lot of her, she has a lot of direct reports, she's not as able to spend the time with the operational department. So I don't, I don't know what those issues could potentially be, but if the structure doesn't change, something might be missed, or the pre-planning may not be able to occur, which could have an impact on the city.
So basically, because of the limited scope of what you're asked to do, you don't know that it's going to impact any of the citizens, that there has been an impact in service to any of our citizens. It's not fair to ask you that question because you weren't really asked to do that. Is that correct?
I guess you could say that.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Maladra?
It seems to me that we're all sort of circling around what the real question is, and we're not, we're not quite getting there. The real question to me is not, have we been hurt by eliminating the position? I think that that's information that informs our decision about what the real issue is, as is other information, like what do other non-home rule communities do and how are they structured? The question, the thing that we need to decide is what we need as an organization to manage and adapt to the challenges of the future. We're an organization that has a mayor, a part-time mayor, and a strong city manager. In other words, we put policymaking decisions and responsibility on the elected heads of the government, and operational decisions, and planning, and things of that nature, on the hired staff of the organization. My question revolves around whether or not we have the sufficient gray matter employed in the correct ways to handle the strategic, the non, the stuff that's not in the weeds, and at the same time, have staff in place who can manage the day-to-day and the business as usual. For us, or actually, I would rephrase it and say that our challenge is to figure out the organizational structure that better enables that type of split. I don't know that the study that we're looking at here gives us enough information to make that decision. I also feel, as Alderman Swanson said, that part of what informs that decision is the budget. Although I want to be really careful, I don't like making that decision as part of the budget discussion. What we're talking about here is a policy matter, a very significant policy matter. In fact, I feel almost as if, this is just my opinion, but the position was eliminated during the heat of a bunch of budget discussions, and we were setting policy on the fly there. I don't think that we should do that again in the opposite direction. I think we have to approach this deliberately with information such as, have we been harmed? How have we been harmed by eliminating the position? What do other communities do? Not because I feel like we have to be like other communities, but it helps to understand what you can do when you understand what others have done. So I think personally, I'm willing to accept this report for what it is, but I would prefer to discuss what we're going to do about it later on when we have more information to make a better decision about what we should do about it. Thanks.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do take a bit of an issue with the line of questioning about what have the residents seen, or how's it impacted residents. I don't think we would expect to see an impact on residents because we take care of day-to-day stuff. People would recognize streets not getting plowed or garbage not being picked up. But part of the role of a forward-thinking and well-run organization is to, is to do a lot of forward-thinking and planning. And residents wouldn't miss that for years. So I'm not sure that we haven't gotten resident complaints because of the lack of the position is necessarily an important metric. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
You made the comment that, that an Assistant City Administrator is not, is quote, "not unusual" in someone's municipalities. Are you comfortable estimating what number of municipalities in, say, Illinois, 20,000 to 25,000 non-home rule, upper-middle class? In other words, very similar demographic? You know, is it, does it push over to 80%? Does it push to 30 by saying, or it's just an unknown?
Well, we have some data from the members of ILCMA, the Illinois City Management Association. And of those members, there's quite a few. But I didn't drill into those to determine which are home rule, which are not. I do have them by population. I did present that to the city. And there's many, I mean, over 50. But, you know, the populations go up higher than yours, but much lower. I think the lowest population's about 3,000, and it goes up into, you know, over 100,000. So I think you'd need to do more analysis than to determine, what are the metrics that you're looking at to determine what is, what is upper-middle class? What do you mean by that? What is your equalized access value? What is your budget? What is the debt? What is your per capita income? So if you wanted to establish those metrics, we do that pretty regularly when we do class and comp work. You could determine that, see who your real comparable communities are, look at their organizational structure, determine if they have assistant managers and what their roles are. You could do that.
I would certainly think, you know, I'm a big believer in not inventing, reinventing the wheel. If 80% of very similar communities come in and with a yes, I think, I'm kind of curious what the other 20% do. But if 80% are there, that's a pretty strong argument. Conversely. So, all right. Thank you. I think I'm done.
Alderman Rodecky?
Okay, rule one, when horse dies, dismount. Okay, this is it. To Alderman Cummings' point, that's exactly why I think the report shouldn't be accepted. This is what we had asked for, just what he asked for. And it's not your fault. I'm not blaming you. Your report's fine. But it does not have the scope. It does not have the breadth. It does not have, it doesn't give us the information that I thought was necessary to make an intelligent decision. You know, Alderman Bruno, I'll accept your point about, you know, it's not a valid metric that maybe the citizens don't see it. But I don't see a valid metric anywhere in this report that tells me that we really need to have somebody. I don't know that the valid metric exists. So again, it's not what we had sought. It's not what we had requested as a group. So, you know, I'd be happy to listen to the audio of the meeting. It was the fifth Monday. I thought it was clearly delineated on that. And I think Don's question absolutely makes the point that that's the information we sought to make this decision. So anyway, horse is dead. I'm dismounting. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, did I see a hand up over there? Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Ruby?
Just a final thought. Report aside, I think the opinion of our city administrator and the other managers is something that we should all really consider. It's their day-to-day. They're the ones running our city. I just think that they're, the value of the human resources that we have are undervalued at times. And I know Stephanie has made it clear that she's got too much on her plate. And the fact that the position was supported for 10 years, and we were running great, and now she's, she's been doing it, she's been treading water, she's been keeping everything on track. I feel that ethically, we should support her and support the entire city through reinstating this position. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cummings.
Okay. I wasn't clear. It's not that I don't support Stephanie at all. She, from the feedback I've gotten on this, absolutely, the workload is more than it should be. So it's this if/then. My problem is the assumption, if the workload is too heavy, then we need to do this. I think there are choices A, B, C, D that haven't been explored, that haven't been drilled down into. And that's my worry. My worry certainly isn't that I don't want to support Stephanie, or support the staff, or support the city of Geneva. To say that this choice is the most efficient when we have not looked at the other choices because we didn't include that in the scope of the question, makes me very reluctant to vote for door A when we haven't even examined door B, C, and D. That's, that's my issue with this. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Just on the report.
Oh, and remember, this has to stay on the report.
Tom Simonian, 921 South Potavia Ave. I was an Alderman during this fifth Monday meeting, and I will echo Alderman Rodecky's points. Those of you who were on the council, if you recall, the intent and the spirit by which this was supposed to proceed was the city had not done an in-depth consulting analysis of its employees, if they're in the right places, if they're making the right amount of money, if they're making the right amount of benefits, to be compared not only to like communities, but also to be compared to the private sector as well. And then taking that analysis and redesigning it to fit today's needs. And I think an example that was used was back in 2008, 2009, the, in 2010, when we went through the recession, less and less permits were requested because of the scenario. Yet, the last couple, three years, the building permits and the permits have skyrocketed. Yet we have not supported that particular part of our growth in today's scenario. So it's not that we didn't have enough people. It might be we don't have enough people in the right places, or we may need more people. So I was under the understanding that this study, one, there were going to be Aldermen involved in the process, number one. Number two, we were going to look at private sector as well in comparable scenarios for both pay and benefits, to make sure our folks were making adequate in similar types of salaries and benefits, et cetera. And if they were not making comparable to other communities and to the private sector, that we would adjust, and we would adjust the other way as well. And also find out to see if people needed to be moved in order to support other departments in today's environment, because the city hadn't done this type of an analysis in, I forget how many years that was talked about. I have no recollection whatsoever, in my opinion, that this particular study was going to be done. One, to me, it makes absolutely no sense to do this study first. It should be done first in totality. And then, if this particular area needs to be drilled down or gone a little deeper into the weeds, it should be done. So I think this thing is being done sort of backwards, or this could have been included in the big study, number one. Number two is, I'm not a professional in this space, but I think the first question I would ask coming into an unknown community is, when did the Assistant City Administrator position begin here? Why did it begin? And what was the implication? And what was the intent of that position? And was it intended to be a forever position, or was it intended to be a short-term position? Now, I don't know those answers, because I wasn't on the council at the time, but that would be where I'd start, is how did the position begin? Because I would scratch my head, knowing Batavia doesn't have an Assistant City Administrator, and St. Charles doesn't have an Assistant City Administrator, yet their communities are much larger than ours. Or is their Assistant City Administrator called something else? Or is that responsibility handled differently? So, in my opinion, I think this is putting the cart before the horse, and the original study that we were going to do should be the one that we should start with, and do it the way that we ought all agreed to on the council at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Alderman Maladra?
Two things. So first, the statement that we haven't done a comprehensive study. We did in February of 2013. I've got it in front of me here. Organizational Analysis and Service Delivery View for the City of Geneva, Illinois, February of 2013. At that time, we had the Assistant City Administrator position. At that time, the study basically said that we have the proper organizational structure, and we are understaffed in certain key areas. We decided to ignore that study completely and eliminate the Assistant City Administrator position for budgetary reasons, for reasons that I was never really exactly clear on. But I don't believe that the study we had tonight necessarily helps us do anything other than rushing into re-establishing the position with as little information as we paid attention to when we eliminated the position. Second thing about why the position exists, I was not on the city council at the time, but I was on the Strategic Plan Committee. And the position was created precisely to have a position in the city that looked to the horizon. At that time, our city administrator was also heavily involved in the day-to-day operation of at least the finance department, if not also aspects of the electric department and the water department. We had a strategic plan effort that was spun up and begun. Everybody's familiar with that. We just went off and updated or worked on creating a new version of that plan. But there was not staff enough to help us keep an eye on the horizon while at the same time keeping the ship moving. Whether or not that was intended to be a forever position depends on whether or not you feel that you always need to have an eye on the horizon. I think we do. But to Alderman Cummings' point, what we haven't done is answer our questions about, is the Assistant City Administrator the only way of getting that taken care of? Maybe there are other options. I don't know. But unless we look at them and say, here's why that one will work or won't work, we're not doing our homework very well. Thanks.
Anyone else? Are we ready to vote? All right. Roll call, please, for this one.
Okay, this is to accept the organizational assessment report as presented. Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhart?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Nay.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to 3B, consider the recommendation to reinstate Assistant City Administrator, Director of Administrative Services, or the position of Director of Administrative Services. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno? Alderman Ruby, seconds. Do we have any discussion from the dais? Alderman Swanson?
I would like to throw out the possibility of delaying decision on this until the planning process for the next fiscal year and not deciding to fill this position immediately this year in an unbudgeted format. I don't know if that needs to be a move.
That an amendment to the motion, or? I'll need help with that.
I would propose that amendment.
Okay.
Can I have a second?
Yes. Postponed to?
As I understand it, it's not necessarily taking it off the table. We're delaying the decision-making, or rather, you're saying to make this consideration at the time of budget.
Correct.
So it doesn't need to come back to another agenda item. It'll just come back as part of the budget process.
That's correct.
Well, no.
It's a committee of the whole meeting, so again, it's a recommending body, so whatever the recommendation is, is what we --
I feel it's important to look at this position in the complete aggregate of the budget, so that we know our FTE count, we know our dollars, and we can adequately take a look at the complete budget as opposed to trying to do this piecemeal right now.
So what does that mean for timing, then, for you, Bob?
We would start in the January budgetary process, and it would become effective if approved with the budget for the next fiscal year.
Jim, is that what you're signing off on for the amendment?
Yeah, I think the clear intent of, I don't want to speak for Bob. I'm glad I didn't have to make the motion. But I think the intent is to bring it up for discussion, not to simply include it in the budget, and if there's no discussion, it goes through, which is probably the correct way, which Stephanie is saying that's the way it will go. So a friendly amendment that Bob's proposing will not necessarily generate the discussion. It will be in there. Is that correct?
Anytime we add a new position to the budget, it's always a separate item of discussion. So either way, you want to look at it, whether, as I understand it, when we look at the budget as a whole in totality, if that position is in there, it would be called out that that position is in there and what those implications are.
But it's an approved position once it gets in the budget.
Once the budget is passed, yes. But prior to passing the budget, you're going to have the discussions, just like we do every year, of what's in the budget and what's not in the budget. I mean, every year, we come to you, last year, we came to you with filling the combo building inspector position, or making the preservation planner full-time.
Right. Here's what I, again, I can't speak for the motioner, but I would prefer to defeat this and bring it up again, rather than simply move it down to the budgetary process. I think then it can be brought up for discussion. My fear is that it's going to fly in under the radar, as sometimes things do. And I think the clear intention of this committee is to have a more in-depth discussion, more information about it, and I think the motion doesn't allow for that right now. Personally, I think it'd be better to, you know, let it ride as it is.
So do you withdraw your second?
Yeah, if that's a correct assessment.
That's your call. So if you want to withdraw your second, then that's what you need to do.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second.
I guess my question to Bob would be, you need a second on the amendment to discuss?
Oh.
Then I'll make the second. I'll make the second to have the discussion.
Alderman Ruby, seconds.
I'll make the second. I mean, because we can amend that amendment, too. But I mean, I guess my question is, you know, I think it should be in context with the budget. I don't disagree, but I think that discussion should happen before we really get into the budget. And I think that's what you were saying, is, yeah, as we start to get into, before we really get into the budget, let's take an overall look at the FTEs and the costs involved. We don't have to do that as part of that budget. We can do it a week, or two, or three, or four before. Isn't that what you were getting at, Bob, I thought?
I'm getting at, at the fifth Monday in January, we should come back and say, we can include this in the discussion, but we should also, we should also talk about what our total FTE count will be and what our total salaries and benefits dollars will be. But I'm saying, let's not make the decision now. Let's not put it in the budget now, but let's consider it for next year.
And you want it discussed at that fifth Monday?
And the guidance would start at the beginning of the planning process.
And I don't think you made the motion that way, but I'll still second it, because if you want to amend it, you can't.
Is that continuing to date certain? Is that the more appropriate motion? I'll ask.
I interpret Mr. Swanson's comments to mean, based on your own intellectual amendments on the fly, that you would like this discussed on the 26th of January, which is the 29th, which is the fifth Monday, as a preamble to the overall budget discussions that follow.
That's exactly right.
And that's what I thought he was saying, too, and that's why.
Do you have a second?
So that's the motion on the table right now, really, then, is to look at this on January 29?
So it's delaying it to January 29.
Correct. And I'm fine still seconding that.
Okay, so we have the motion. We have it second. Alderman Maladra had his hand up, then Alderman Bruno, then Cummings.
Well, okay, so now that I understand what we're proposing to do, I think I'm okay. The only thing I was going to say before is, if we embed it as part of the budget discussion, I don't know what's changed. I don't know when we've looked at any alternatives that might be out there. I don't know, you know, basically, we go into the budget with as much information we have now, and then we're setting policy on the fly, which I want to avoid at all costs. I think that this needs to be a very in-depth discussion in the context of what are our alternatives, what have other communities done, and what we think is best for the city of Geneva. So if we can have that at this meeting in January, then that'll be good.
Alderman Bruno?
Madam Chair. Well, for myself, I'm not surprised by this whole conversation. We've been, I've spent no small amount of time churning this over for over a year. I think it was a bad idea to not fill the position when we didn't, and I still think that. I am perfectly happy to move forward with this time. Thank you.
Alderman Cummings?
I'm going to echo Alderman Maladra's comment that we need more information before that fifth January, fifth Monday, January meeting. Otherwise, we will be sitting around here hypothecating again. I would love to have drilled down results that say something like, you know, 40% of the communities that are in the demographic do, 40% don't, and 20% do this, and a lot have rearranged things. And then we have some meat to look at and some decisions to make. Right now, we're shooting from the hip. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
I disagree. I feel like we are going off of our internal employees' feedback, and this discussion should have happened six months into her position. It's been over a year. So for the past six months, you know, these details that you're saying that you want come January should have already been gathered.
Yeah, that's exactly.
So I feel like we're, you know, again, it's the kicking the can down the road. I just, I really strongly feel that the need is apparent. It's been emphasized, it's been explained. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais on the motion on the floor, which is to postpone this discussion until January 29, 2018?
That's the amendment.
That's the amendment, sorry. Alderman Kilburg?
I think that the opportunity to look more closely at this and try to define more closely what the responsibilities, if we were to put someone in place, what those responsibilities would entail, I think is pretty important. I think one of the things we need to remember, that when this position was eliminated, it was at a pretty controversial time as it relates to the council and the transition of our city administrators. And I think that this was one of the issues that hung over the appointment of our current city administrator. And again, I want to commend our current city administrator for her diligence and hard work over the last 18 months, and working hard to get the job done. I do think, though, that if we look at where we're at, especially right now after our decisions from last week, I think it would be problematic to move forward with the creation of a position in haste, especially when we're going to be going to the community and asking for sales tax increase. You know, I think those that are going to be opposed to the sales tax increase will see this as ammunition not to support it. And again, I'm not saying that this position may not be necessary. I'm just saying, I think that we've performed pretty well for the last 18 months without it, I think, as Alderman Swanson has suggested. I think that we need to reflect and do some more homework on it before we move forward, especially in light of the fact that we don't have any collective bargaining that's going to be before us here, I don't think, in the next --
The next contract, we got the letter to demand to start bargaining now. So the Street and Fleets contract is up April 30. So we will start negotiating that now.
I stand corrected. Thank you. So that's an issue. Maybe that's one that we outsource. We've talked about outsourcing. Maybe that's one that we could consider outsourcing. You know, I think benefits will be behind us, at least for 2018. I, you know, that's just sort of where I'm at. I just think it's common sense that maybe we don't get ahead of ourselves here. And that's not to say that we, as a body, we couldn't support this and move forward with it, because we have been effective at managing headcounts over the last five or six years. If you look at our headcount as a city, I think we certainly haven't added. I think that we have made adjustments as it relates to staffing based on needs of the various departments. I think that there's been good management as it relates to staffing, for the most part, at least as I'm aware of. But as it relates to this position, I think that, at least tonight, my vote would probably be no, not to move forward immediately, but to do some further homework on it.
Any comment from the audience on the amendment? No? All right, are we ready to vote on the amendment, which will?
Can we repeat that, please?
Yes. Takes Item 3B and delays it until January 29, 2018.
In conjunction with the planning process.
In conjunction with the planning process.
Additional information has been requested.
Is that in addition to the?
I guess the question is, are we to hire a consultant to do that? Do you want that internally? We've provided all of that information in the past. So do we want to spend more money with the consultant to get all that information and gather what's already out there? Or I guess I'm not understanding, because the staffing analysis went through all of that. The aldermen who participated with the consultant were provided a list of communities that have an assistant position and their populations. I guess I just would need better direction, exactly what we're looking for to make this decision.
I am not proposing another consulting study. I'm not.
Alderman Cummings, what are you proposing?
The information is out there. I don't know how we access it. I can figure out how to access it, but the information is out there somewhere. There is information.
We have it already.
On similar-sized municipalities, non-home rule, similar demographic within the state of Illinois.
Okay.
And how is their department structure done? Some will have city, a list of, you know, in the movie Jurassic Park, there was a great scene.
Hold on. Which roles do we all play?
Where one of the T-Rex, his honor, there's a great scene where somebody says, we can't have any T-Rexes loose. I can look on the computer, and they're all here. And he types in, do we have 35 T-Rexes? And the answer from the computer is yes. And Jeff Goldblum says, ask it if we have 45. And he says, we don't have 45. We only have 35 on the island. He said, type in, do we have 45? He types in, do we have 45 T-Rexes? Computer says, yes. In other words, how you pose the question is going to change the answer, and you may be getting information that is useless to you. So I don't want to see a list of all the non-home rule communities in Illinois that do have city administrators in absence of a list that shows all non-home rule, similar demographic, on and on, that do not have. That's what I want to see. And then I think that we can have a very fair discussion, a very good discussion. And for the ones that don't, how are they structuring things? How are they, do they have less snow? I mean, at some point, we'll figure out the differences, and then we can have a discussion and figure out, either yes, we need the Assistant City Administrator position, or no, we don't need that. But in either case, we need to offload some work. We offload it into the following categories. And I think at that point, we have a good discussion, we have a solid answer. So that's the information I'm looking for.
Alderman Rodecky? Alderman Reddick?
I guess to summarize that, perhaps the question should be, how would you organize this, maybe to the consultant for an addendum, how would you organize this city without a city administrator most effectively, rather than ask the question as Don said, it's the way it's asked.
Clarify, without a city administrator or without assistant city?
Assistant city administrator. That's, that's the following column. Maybe we'll have that discussion now. No, no, I mean, but to his point, I mean, what are the alternatives? You'd asked that before, I think, Don. You know, if we don't do this, what, what are viable alternatives for us to look at? What would you recommend? And, you know, it's more of a can-do attitude. What, what would you do? You know, and if they say, hey, then we can see something what alternatives are, and if they don't work, I, I'm fully prepared to add additional staff. I, I fully am, but I, I'm looking for the correct information to make that decision. So, you know, I think I need to look at other alternatives. If we don't, how would we do this? How do other communities that are not home rule do that? Thank you.
Alderman Ruby?
I understand and appreciate the value of the comparison. It just doesn't hold as much relevance to me when the voices within our community are so strong. I think that's what we should be focusing on. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so we're going to vote. Alderman Marx?
You know, I have, I have to agree with, with Alderman Reddick and Alderman Cummings. I need more information. I need to know if there's other options available that will work better for the city of Geneva. Doing something the same way over and over again does not always mean is correct. And, and opening up and trying to find out solutions. I, I'm with Jim. I don't, if, if, if it falls that we need somebody, and we may, at what level do we need them? And this report isn't telling me that. Do we need them in human resources? Do we need, maybe not a city administrator, but a director of administrative services?
Again.
I'm sorry, assistant city administrator. I, I missed it. But, but realistically, that's, that's the information I kind of need to make sure that we're making the right decision and just not looking in a vacuum, because that's the way we've always done it. There's more than one ways to do things, and we need all those options.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Just to bring it up, you brought up the, the assessment from 2013. We had a city administrator, an assistant city administrator in 2013. That report clearly came back that we deliver better services for less money than comparable communities.
Right.
Obviously, it's not a bad structure. Can it be tweaked? Possibly. But I think the experts that we'd be appealing to already work for the city here. I think if, if the staff that we're talking to wants an assistant city administrator, I'm for it. Thanks.
Anyone else before we vote on the amendment? All right, so do we have enough, I mean, the amendment is, and my understanding is to delay this discussion until January 29th, 2018, and that some up here have asked for additional information. But there does not seem to be a push toward paying a consultant, again, to compile that information. So an "aye" vote will delay this discussion until January 29th, 2018. A roll call, please.
Mike Bruno?
Nay.
Tara Burkhardt?
Nay.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Nay.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Meladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Nay.
Jim Reddick?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes six-four?
Okay, so it passes six-four, so. So do we have to mo-
Motion as amended.
Okay. So now we have to vote on the motion as amended, which would be 3B, consider the recommendation to reinstate assistant city administrator, director of administrative services, or the position of director of administrative services at the January 29th, 2018, 5th Monday, meeting.
What? So I'm, I'm-
Basically, you're, you're voting on the same exact thing, but the first one was the amendment to the motion, so now you have to vote on the original motion with that amendment.
So the amendment didn't move the whole discussion to the 29th?
No.
Just amended the main motion.
Just amended the main motion.
We didn't table it. We amended the motion.
So we're still voting on?
I probably must state it that. I thought it was-
So essentially, it's the same thing you just voted on, but this is the actual motion. The other was just an amendment to change this motion.
So an "aye" vote?
Yes.
Alderman McGowan?
That was my question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for asking.
So an "aye" vote is in favor of?
Delaying it until January 29th.
Thank you.
Delay discussion or delay creation of the position?
Discussion.
Thank you.
I'm good. Sorry to be late.
And so, sorry, just to further clarify, so a "nay" vote would mean?
You don't want it delayed until January 29th?
It's as stated-
Correct.
-on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments up here from the audience? Alderman Bruno?
Pardon me? So we've just voted on the amendment.
Voted to add the amendment to this.
Oh, voted to add the amendment.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. So if you vote "nay," you're just, the motion would die. If you vote in favor of it, the vote-
The amendment would die.
No, the amendment we've already voted on. The motion would die if you vote, if the majority voted "no." If, if you vote "yes," it will be delayed until the January 29th meeting.
So a "nay" vote means we don't want to talk about it ever again. An "aye" vote means we want to talk about it again in January.
Correct. Because the main motion was amended, so that main motion no longer exists.
Nice going, Bob.
All right, we're ready to vote. Roll call, please.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Meladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Reddick?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
And it passes unanimously, correct? All right, moving on to 3C. Recommend draft resolution approving a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the city of Geneva and IBEW Local 196.
So moved.
Alderman Marx, in a second. Alderman McGowan. Do we have any discussion from the dais? Any discussion or questions from the audience? If not, then we'll do a roll call vote for this, please.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt?
Aye.
Donald Cummings?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Meladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Reddick?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. 3D. Recommend draft resolution declaring fire department personal protective equipment as surplus property.
Second.
Alderman McGowan and Marx with the second. Any questions or comments? Anything from the audience? All right. I think this, a voice vote's fine for this. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3E. Recommend approval of certificate of acceptance for park place pavement improvements, erosion control, water mains, and sanitary sewers. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, in a second. Alderman Ruby, any questions or comments about this from up at the dais? Anybody from the audience? Okay, I think a voice vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3F. Recommend approval of certificate of acceptance for park place pavement markings, electric, and parkway restorations. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, Alderman Swanson with the second. Any questions or comments from the audience? A voice vote. All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3G. Recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of an easement plat for lots four and five in Sansone's first addition to Geneva, northeast corner of Charles and Ford Streets. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx and Alderman Bruno with the second. Any questions or comments from the dais? Anybody from the audience? All right, a voice vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3H. Recommend draft resolution awarding bid and contract to Archon Construction in the amount not to exceed $159,250 for Dunston and Sunset Storm Sewer Installation.
So moved.
Alderman Marx with the motion, second?
Second.
Alderman Cummings, any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Marx?
Rich, probably a question for you, or, or, I didn't see Bob back there, I'm sorry. Bob, I noticed in, in the letter that we only received, we only checked on one reference. Is that nor, normal? Because we've never used this company before, is that correct?
Correct. The Elmhurst was the only town that was listed. Everybody else was a, like a county agency.
Okay, that, that's, okay, that's fine then. All right. So that was the only town or city out there, that's why we only checked out?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That, that's all. Sorry, I didn't see you-
No, it's okay.
-back there, I mean.
Any questions from the audience, statements? All right, a voice vote's fine. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3I. Recommend draft ordinance rezoning 10,000, or 1, 1009 East State Street from G-01, General Office District One to the B-4 Business District, Tom Lenoey Fox Jewelers.
Second.
Alderman McGowan, and then Marx with the second. Any questions? I see David's here tonight.
David, could you just, I, I, I read it, but I didn't really exactly, what does the B-4 Dis, Business District really, is that just retail, or is it office retail, or is it just retail, our B-4 Business District? If you could just clarify?
It's kind of a catch-all business district, but it does allow for office, too. The current zoning is strictly an off, office district, so this gives a more variety.
So this allows office and retail, this one, correct? Anything else, or just pretty much?
I mean, it's, it's a pretty permissive district, but, you know, you still have the special use requirement for, for uses like drive-throughs.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Appreciate it.
David, they, they do not plan to use the drive-through, right?
Correct.
If another- No, that was a concern for the neighborhood. But if it were, so if we were to approve the zoning tonight, and, you know, the jewelers were to move on, and are you saying if another bank moved in there, or something that wanted to use the drive-through, would they have to come back before us?
Like, if a drive-through restaurant wanted to come through, they'd have to go through a special use permit and demonstrate that they comply with the nine standards. If a bank wanted to reestablish the drive-through, it had, it had been discontinued, so they'd have to go through that same process.
Very good. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Oh, Alderman Kilburg?
This was somewhat controversial a year ago when it was proposed, fast food restaurant for this site, and the neighborhood was pretty outspoken that that wasn't their preference. Over the last week or so, I've been in communication with a lot of those same people, and haven't heard any, any concerns expressed at all for this, this, this rezoning, and that's, that's good to hear. And this, by the way, was approved by the plant commission by a nine-zero vote, so I'm supportive of it, and the residents in the immediate area that I've contacted seem to be in agreement with that.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg, anyone else? All right, we'll do a voice vote for this. All those in favor, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. 3J. Recommend draft resolution approving a preliminary final plat of subdivision for Lindstrom Division, John Thornhill Development Properties, Inc.
So moved.
Alderman Marx, can I have a second? Alderman McGowan. Any questions from the dais? Any statements, comments? What about the public? All right, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Deep breath, breath for this one. 3K. Recommend draft ordinance amending Title XI zoning, Chapter Five, Section 11-5i for B lot and area requirements. Chapter 14, Section 11-14-6, application procedures. Chapter 14A, Section 11-14A-6, contents of site plan application. Chapter Three, Section 11-3-3, accessory buildings and uses, and Chapter Six and Chapter Seven, lot and area requirements of the Geneva City Code.
So moved.
Alderman Marx?
Nicely done.
Alderman Swanson. Anybody, have any questions or comments?
It's housekeeping in nature. David Wright, this is housekeeping. It's just changing the number of, you know, copies we need and stuff in most cases.
That's correct. If you recall, a few months ago, we had similar amendments before you. There's just some cross-references that were not changed at some point in time that we've, we've caught that need to be added or corrected. And then we're just trying to eliminate the number of references to the number of copies that needed to be submitted with each, each application, because we produce that number periodically, just to save paper.
Very good. Any other questions? No? All right, all those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we're on to number four, new business. Is there any new business from up here at the dais? Alderman Marx?
I think we need to congratulate this gentleman sitting next to me that did win the Chamber of Commerce Wood Award on last Thursday night. Congratulations, Dean. Well deserved.
Anyone else with new business from here? No? What about the public? Come on up.
I'm a resident of Geneva, and I have the patent house. I have a question, and I don't know if I should just go to the city. There's the building next to Graham's Chocolate on James Street, and I'm a little confused. It used to be Nosh, and they've, they've painted the outside in all of these different colors, and the sign ordinances are, it's on the building, and it's the whole length of the whole, from the top to the doorway. I wasn't sure if that's legal in Geneva. How, how do people do that? And I know that we don't have any, that people can paint. We don't have, I guess, in the historic district or whatever, that they can paint whatever they want now. I've heard that. But also, is it in compliance with the signage? And I don't know who to talk to, and I thought as long as I'm sitting here. Is that something that has to come through the city council? Or is it, David, or?
I'll just briefly, it is not in compliance. They've applied for a text amendment, so it has to go through the HPC, and then through the planning commission, and then to the Cal, to the city council. So the way it is right now, no, it does not comply with our, our codes, but they've applied for a text amendment.
Okay, thank you. And, because a lot-
We're going to go through a public process as to whether or not we should change our codes to allow something like that.
I see. A lot, a lot of people on Third Street and everything, you know, we've all went greatly out of our way to comply with sign-
It's scheduled for the HPC on November 21st, if you're interested in-
It's November 21st?
November 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we had someone else from the public?
Still Tom Simonian, 921 South Potaviev. Need my glasses for this one. I wanted to piggyback on some comments that were made last week at the meeting by Mr. Alderman Cummings regarding the, the pensions here in the city that are, I believe, are investment account generated a little over 10% return, which is absolutely fabulous, especially considering, I think, only 40% of the fund can be equities, and the rest, bonds. So that's fabulous, but the likelihood of that happening on an ongoing basis is slim to none. And yet, the pension exposure to the city was an increase, I think, of 10% as well, when the number of folks decreased. And the question becomes one of, I think, what happens 10 years from now, or when does that double? And I think it was 7.2 years or something. We all know, I'm reading from an article in Forbes about the pension crisis in Illinois, and how cities across the country are dealing with their pension crisis. But more importantly- But more importantly, for example, San Jose increased city worker pension contributions and cut their pay to make ends meet. Atlanta required workers to contribute more to their pensions as well, but also cut cost of living adjustments. Others, such as Lexington, managed to bargain their way out, at least for the time being, out of their pension crisis. And where reform and bargaining were no longer options, cities such as Stockton, Cedar Falls, and most notably Detroit turned to bankruptcy. Bankruptcy in federal court allowed those cities to bypass state constitutional protections and cut pension benefits. Unfortunately, the state of Illinois doesn't allow municipalities to do that, and we're handcuffed by Springfield, and Springfield doesn't allow the municipalities to individually manage their pensions. But what I wanted to bring up is that the North Riverside, which is a Chicago suburb of 7,000 folks, has run out of options to control its pension costs. The village, which skipped payments for four of the last 10 years in order to avoid massive service cuts, have already trimmed the village's headcount, raised sales taxes to the maximum rate, and even added a places for eating tax to increase revenues. It's exhausted its funding options, that's why North Riverside's trying to innovate its way out of this crisis by contracting a private provider to run the village's fire service. The mayor wants to move North Riverside's firefighters, their full salaries, to some private company that has successfully run the village's paramedic services for more than 20 years. By making the move, the village can cut its $1.8 million budget deficit by nearly 40% and its reliance on pension plans, because the private company will provide 401Ks and cut its workers' comp costs. Now, I'm not saying that's something that should be done, but I think it's something that this council needs to seriously start considering. And you talk about bringing on an assistant city administrator to do strategic planning. This is exactly the strategic planning that that person should be doing, because down the road, not only Geneva, but I think a number of municipalities in this state are going to run into the same situation. And I think it's imperative to look at all the options as a city and for the citizens and taxpayers moving down the road. And to give you an example of that, the collective bargaining agreement that you all unanimously supported, I would like to know how many of you all in the companies that you work for get 39 days off after one day, one year of service with that company. That's two months, folks. 39 days off after one year. These are the kind of things that need to be looked at on an ongoing basis going into the future, not only for the benefit of the individual citizens, but also for the benefit of the employees. Because at the end of the day, when there's no money, the jobs get cut. But if it's worked on together, those jobs can be saved if it's all done together. That, and the last thing I wanted to say, which I guess I was bothered by, is that just one week after the council agreed to a half a percent citywide sales tax referendum and a 2% places for eating tax, and sat there and said, this money's going to be used for capital needs. One week later, a request is put on the agenda to add a non-capital need to the tune of $156,000. I don't think the timing could have been any worse to send a message to the restaurant group after that tax had been imposed, and all the talk was about the capital needs. And we put on the agenda $156,000 non-capital need. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, there's been some incorrect statements made. Number one, it's not a place for eating tax and a sales tax referendum. This council knows, and this community should know, our restaurateurs who left should have stuck around despite the tweets indicating that we were voting on it tonight. The sales tax referendum was recommended by the restaurateurs, Madam Chairman, as you well know. The places for eating tax has been put into place as a contingency. Any smart businessperson, any smart business organization would have a contingency. The $156,000 salary as stated by the resident is incorrect. It was stated accurately in the packet, it should be so noted. It should also be so noted that there's not 39 days given to any member of the union after one year of employment. That includes sick days, if every sick day was taken, every personal day was taken, et cetera. So massaging information's fascinating, but getting the facts are critical. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Simonian?
I apologize if I did not communicate properly with regards to the contingency. The issue I was making was regardless if it's the half percent citywide sales tax or it's the contingency tax, it was communicated to the restaurant group and the citizens that those dollars were going to be earmarked for capital needs. So it was a capital needs issue that I was trying to focus on. With regards to the days, it's 10 vacation days, 12 personal days, 13 public holidays, one safety day, and three funeral days.
That's incorrect, sir.
That's what I read.
Well, it's incorrect.
I said 12, I'm sorry, you said 12 personal days? No.
Microphone, sir.
As I read it, it's one day a month that you get allocated, and is after a year, that one day a month comes to 12.
For sick leave that you have to be sick to take.
Right.
It's not personal, that's not a personal leave. There are three personal days, 12 sick days.
I'm reading it, I'm reading it a little differently.
Okay. Alderman Ruby?
Can we get clarification, please, on the assistant city administrator salary, where that money comes from?
On page five of your electronic packet, ladies and gentlemen, it states... Oh, I got it. 75% of the proposed salary...
Comes from the general fund.
Comes from the general fund. Approximately 12% comes from the water and wastewater fund, and 13% from the electric. Is that correct? And there's reason behind that.
Every year, we look at how positions are allocated depending upon who they're doing work for. So for instance, in the years that that position was negotiating an electric contract, there would have been more allocated towards the electric fund than the general fund. It varies from budget year to budget year based on the workload.
So, and one more point of clarification, is there any relationship between the funding for this position and the sales tax or the potential places for eating tax?
In fact, short answer is absolutely none. So that's the challenge, you know, sometimes a lie travels halfway around the world before the pants get, or the truth gets his pants on. This council's about putting the truth on. To, and we discussed this at great length last week about linkage. There is no linkage between a sales tax referendum, a places for eating tax ordinance, or the ACA position as proposed. Absolutely none.
As a matter of fact, the capital needs that we've been referring to, in that 2013 staffing analysis, it refers to a CIP Capital Improvement Program. That's been in place for years. Basically, our capital, our execution of that capital improvement plan has been, oh, just throw it on the pile, throw another one on the pile. And the debate about whether or not we would continue to need this city administrator, as Jim and Don both pointed out, took place last January. So, and the sales tax referendum came up recently. So, you know, the fact is, folks, there's things that we need to do, capital things. There's things that maybe we want to do, which is look at the proper organization for the city in order to meet the challenges, the many challenges that we're going to face as the world gets more complex ahead of us. And looking to meet our revenue goals, establish our organization policy, and meet our capital needs is not something that's necessarily irresponsible business. In fact, I think the irresponsible thing is to try and pretend that you can wish all of that away, and you can't. You got to take the bull by the horns and do what you got to do.
Anything else? Alderman Ruby?
Unrelated. The collective bargaining agreement, I'm not sure how or where it's appropriate to bring this up, but I was curious if we could look into outsourcing that?
This most recent contract was outsourced to the tune of $18,293.50.
Okay.
That is a normal, that has been for the past 17 years, the responsibility of the assistant city administrator to negotiate those contracts.
And is that, well, item C that we approved tonight, that's what I was referring to?
The union contract? Yes, correct.
Okay.
It'll be ratified next week.
Okay.
At the council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx? Alderman Swanson?